No. Well, we're recording?
We are recording, the meeting is live.
Okay, I am going to call our October twentieth city council meeting to order. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all, an important statement. We are going to call the roll.
Alderman Beebe.
Here.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Here.
Alderman Santiago.
Here.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Hallen.
Here.
Alderman Carrato Munoz. Alderman Demus.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek.
Here.
Alderman Stow. Alderman Avinia Soto. Alderman Marano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Here. We do have a forum. We're gonna have our time of public participation, and if you have not already filled out your sheet, you can still do that and just hand it to any city council member, but we will begin with. Okay, we're gonna begin with Denise Collo.
Hello, my name is Denise Collo, I live in Ward Four, and every day I take my son to school at the high school. Anybody that has had a child at the high school or in the high school knows how crazy the intersection of Wood and Geneva is. So I was just kind of wanted to come if there's been any kind of traffic studies or if there could be. Basically have two directions of traffic that does not stop. You've got a lot of school buses coming and traffic backs up going northbound on Wood Street to head towards the train tracks. You have the traffic southbound on Wood that does not stop. So you have traffic coming straight, you have traffic making a left-hand turn onto Geneva. Then you have all the school buses coming down Geneva, turning south onto Wood to get to the high school. So it's just kind of crazy in the morning and there's only one stop sign in that intersection, so that was all, if anything.
Okay.
Traffic study or anything could be done, looking better options.
Wood and Geneva specifically.
Yeah, Wood and Geneva, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Rafael Viera.
Hi, I am Rafael Viera, I'm going to speak Spanish and Sue going to translate for me.
No problem. I will be extending the time slightly for the translation to so everyone's.
Okay. Buenas tardes, buenas tardes, mayor. Buenas tardes to all the members of the council. Bueno, lo que venimos aqui hoy es agradecerles más que nada. En tiempos donde es difícil encontrar buenas noticias, el festival mexicano fiestas patrias de West Chicago del 2025 fue un verdadero respiro de alegría, orgullo y unidad comunitaria.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. In times when good news can be hard to find, the Mexican Independence Day Festival West Chicago twenty twenty five was a true bread of joy, pride and community unity.
Gracias a la colaboración y el trabajo en equipo, en equipo quiero decirlo nuevamente porque se trabajó en equipo para este evento. El equipo, con el equipo de la ciudad de West Chicago, Despertar Latino, Casa Michoacan DuPage, We Go Together for Kids, el Distrito Escolar treinta y tres, el Distrito Escolar noventa y cuatro, el Museo de la Ciudad de West Chicago y People Made Visible. Logramos realizar un evento que reunió a más de mil personas en un ambiente familiar, cultural y festivo.
Thanks to the collaboration and teamwork, and I want to emphasize teamwork because this was a work of a team made of the city of West Chicago, Despertar Latino, Casa Michoacan DuPage, We Go Together for Kids, Districts thirty three and eighty four, the West Chicago City Museum and People Made Visible. We were able to hold an event that brought together over one thousand people in a family-friendly cultural and festival atmosphere.
También agradecemos profundamente a nuestros patrocinadores cuyo apoyo hizo posible esta gran celebración.
We also want to give a heartfelt thank you to our sponsors whose support made this great celebration possible.
El resultado fue un festival exitoso y con un impacto positivo en la comunidad, con un balance financiero favorable de nueve mil cuatrocientos veintinueve con cuarenta y ocho centavos.
The result was a successful festival with a positive impact and a favorable financial balance of nine thousand four hundred twenty nine and forty eight cents.
Es un logro que fue posible gracias al esfuerzo de nuestros voluntarios, la participación activa de las organizaciones y el respaldo de nuestros aliados.
This success was possible thanks to the dedication of our volunteers, the active participation of community organizations and the strong support of our partners.
Esta fiesta no fue solamente, no solamente fue una fiesta, fue una declaración de identidad.
This was not just a cultural celebration, it was a declaration of identity.
Es un recordatorio de que nuestra raíz es nuestra cultura y nuestra esencia florece cuando trabajamos juntos.
A reminder that our roots, our culture and our essence thrive when we work together.
Por eso hoy hoy venimos a solicitar formalmente que el próximo año podamos contar con dos días de festival para seguir fortaleciendo esta hermosa tradición que une a tantas familias en nuestra comunidad.
That is why today I would like to formally request that next year's festival be extended to two days so we can continue strengthening this beautiful tradition that brings so many families together.
Normalmente se hacía anteriormente dos días, queremos regresar otra vez a dos días.
It used to be a two-day celebration and so we would like to go back to that.
Y bueno, declaramos, queremos decir que públicamente que el balance positivo que se hizo en esta ocasión lo vamos a reservar para el próximo, para el próximo año.
And we want to declare publicly that the positive balance that was left, we want to reserve it for next year's festival.
Fue posible este, tener un balance, este, esta cantidad precisamente porque trabajamos en equipo como comunidad.
We were able to have this positive balance because we work as a team work with the community.
Y por eso queremos, son muy, en este tiempo son muy pocas buenas noticias, queremos decirles gracias a todos ustedes.
Nowadays are very few the good news that we receive and so today we want to say thank you to you for helping bring this goodness.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, next we have Lita Estrada.
Hi, hello again.
Hello.
Okay, so my name is Lita Estrada, I'm a case worker for Shilling Association. I just wanted to give a brief introduction about the services that we offer. And lastly, the partnership within the city specifically with Mayor Bobby, Alderwoman Alcantara and also Alderwoman Carrito for this upcoming event that we're gonna have this Saturday, October twenty fifth. So, Shilling Association, we're a nonprofit organization and we offer comprehensive free social services to low-income individuals, to families. The main mission between, sorry, within the organization is to help, is to support the underserved population, the vulnerable population because they're the ones that mainly don't know where to go, what organizations are available, what services, resources, even services that they qualify for. So some of the services that we provide, we work with IDHS, we're in Illinois welcoming center, so the services that we provide are free. For instance, our welfare application, housing assistance, Medicaid assistance, Medicare applications, utility bill assistance. So for instance, we can help with Light Heap, so I don't know if any of you all are familiar with that program. We work directly with DuPage County, we're a partner with them, and that's a program under DuPage County where we can help people apply if they qualify to receive financial assistance for their light and gas bill. One of the biggest highlights between, within the organization is the senior services that we provide. We have in-home service and an adult daycare center. So the in-home service essentially is a caregiver that goes to the client's home, they help them with emotional factors, transportation, with physical needs that they need, nutrition as well because they can do meal preps for them. And the adult daycare centers is transportation that's picked up from their home and also dropped at their home. Right when it ends, they receive breakfast, lunch and a snack. But they also receive care and help because we have a lot of clients actually have dementia, so that's what we also help with as well. But those are kind of like the services that we provide, but the biggest priority that we have for this year is getting people access to healthcare and healthy lifestyle. That's particularly a program because we received a grant from Northwestern Medicine where that's our main priority. And that being said, one of the biggest events that we're gonna have, we also hosted a health fair actually this past August and around a hundred people went to that event. It was very successful and a lot of people received services and their information, the information from local resources. But as Alderwoman Alcantara mentioned, this is the event that we're gonna have this Saturday. I have a lot of flyers included for everyone here if they wish to have some. But it's from ten AM to one PM, as she mentioned, it's gonna be at the West Chicago Community High School. And it's, we're gonna offer free vaccines, flu vaccines, and they're provided by Walgreens. So we're also gonna have donations, we're gonna give out winter clothing, winter boots, some shoes that we also have, there's gonna be local resources and some games as well, some luteria for the families that are gonna be there. But this was not able to be accomplished without the city, specifically the mayor, Bobby, and Alderwoman Alcantara and Alderwoman Carrito because we worked really tirelessly and very well together to really help promote this event but also work on actually getting people access to help here. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have. Suquera Telles.
Sorry you get to hear me again. I'll try to be brave. Well, good evening again, members of the city council and members of our community. I come before you tonight with a heavy heart because while we recently celebrated the beauty of our culture, the very next morning, right here in West Chicago, our community woke up to her breaking news. Several of our neighbors were taken by us as they were simply on their way to work. They were not criminals, they were parents, friends, community members, people who work. They work hard, they pay taxes and hold the city home. Since that day, the detentions have not stopped. And every time one of these things happens, a family is broken apart. Children are left crying, wondering if their mom or dad will come home. Neighbors live in fear, checking over their shoulders on the way to work. It is not right. It is not who we are as a community. That is why I'm here tonight, to ask for your help and for your courage. We know that our local authorities do not participate in these actions and we deeply appreciate that. I know the Trust Act prevents them from helping, but there's been some that don't care and they still participate, so I really, really appreciate that our local authorities do not participate in these actions. But as a previous speaker mentioned, we need to do more. We need to make sure that the city of West Chicago does not indirectly help by allowing us to use city property or resources to assemble or to prepare for operations that target our community. And beyond that, the city can follow the example of Cook County and Will County by passing ordinances that protect our residents and ensure that West Chicago stands firmly for the safety and dignity of all families. Organizations like Despertar Latino and others have been doing everything we can. Many organizations, I don't want to just single out one, like all organizations in West Chicago and all the page, to be honest. We have been doing everything we can with very limited resources, including some members of the council. And we are doing this to support families, to share information and to remind them that they are not alone, but we cannot do this alone. We know that you see what is happening, we know that you care, and we know that you want to do something to help. So tonight, I'm asking you, please act now, before more families are torn apart, before more children lose the safety and love that every child deserves. West Chicago has always been a city with a big heart, a city of compassion, of adversity, a city where people care for one another, so let us continue to be that city, a place where everyone, no matter where they come from, can feel safe, valued and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jennifer Scarpase.
Scarpase.
Scarpase, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Scarpase. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Last Friday the seventeenth, I had witnessed a car with two ICE agents come out of the car, go to somebody's door, try to get them to open the door, circle around West Chicago throughout the day, go back, try to get them to come out again. And then later that day, I saw that same car parked in the city lot of the police department. This was not a city car, this was not a police car. The two agents that I saw get out were all dressed up in their cosplay. Now, I believe that most if not all of you did take an oath to uphold the constitution. And this includes ensuring the safety as much as you can of members of our community. So having outsiders come into our community who then proceed to terrorize members of our community, breaking their car windows, pulling them out of their cars, cuffing them, zip tying them, throwing them into a squad, violating their constitutional rights, robbing them of due process. And like the other speaker said, this is going on around schools, you know, and stores. Children are terrorized, parents don't want to take their children to school, they don't want to go to the grocery store, they're scared. So allowing this to happen, allowing them to come in and use city facilities, that makes us complicit and that does not feel right, that does not feel good, that's not how, that's not who West Chicago is, that's not how we are, we represent ourselves from what I've seen. But there is, there is another option, and Mayor Brandon Johnson has done just that. So I'm just gonna read a little bit of this, Mayor Brandon Johnson signed the ICE Free Zone Executive Order which creates clear mechanisms to prohibit federal immigration agents from using any city-owned property in their ongoing operations. He said, quote, "We will not tolerate ICE agents violating our residents' constitutional rights, nor will we allow the federal government to disregard our local authority. ICE agents are detaining elected officials, teargassing protesters, children. We will not stand for that in the city. With this executive order, Chicago stands firm in protecting the constitutional rights of our residents and immigrant communities and upholding our democracy." So as I said, there is another option with this, and aside from the legal standpoint or, you know, whether you're an elected official or not, you know, our law enforcement, our service providers, our businesses, neighbor, these are our neighbors and it is our moral duty to ensure that their rights are not being violated, that they feel safe because that's what we want for our community. And if we don't stand for and with our community members, then what is it that we're standing for? It's nothing. So I am not just hoping I'm, this needs to happen, something must change and certainly.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards that I received, is there anyone that had been wanting to speak that didn't get their card up here? Okay. Well, that concludes our public participation time and just a couple, a couple of quick responses. Thank you so much for, for everything that, that you guys bring to us. I'm personally very happy that we have so many people coming to these meetings and participating and wanting to be part of the process. And we are writing down the things that you say. I mean, just so you understand a little bit of how the process works. Because we are a public decision-making body, we're, we follow the Open Meetings Act and so anything that we are going to vote on has to be announced seven days in advance. So, you know, the things that you bring to us, like, don't expect for us to immediately hold a vote on them because we can't do that. We can, we can discuss things, but we, we are, we are taking it all down and, and and giving a lot of thought to these things. I, I, I hear the concerns about due process and the people of our, of our town who have been taken both, which includes, includes a citizen and a legal resident and we're aware of that. There's thirty-five people from our community as of yesterday that have been taken to the best of our, of our knowledge. I'm on a call every day, Monday through Friday, with local leaders and District Thirty-three, District Ninety-four, EduCare, community partners, etc., talking about these issues. And we have a daily thirty-minute briefing to discuss what's going on because it's a very rapidly changing thing from, from day to day. I asked the DuPage mayors and managers to convene a mayor's meeting, which is happening this Thursday, to talk about this issue specifically and get some legal updates as well. So we'll be meeting with the state's attorney and some other people on Thursday. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of confusion about what can and can't be done and it's, it's complicated. It's, it's not easy. We do not have jurisdiction over federal agents and we do follow the Trust Act. And our officers are being put in some really difficult situations where they have to make, you know, in that instant decisions, so. Been very proud of them and the way they've handled things. We've had, I think, eight protests in West Chicago in the last four weeks. And our police have done a great job of keeping everybody safe and ensuring the community's ability to use their constitutional right to free speech and to ask the government to redress wrongs. And so I've been very proud of our community all around in that, and I hear you, it's a big deal. We have, a lot of our businesses are suffering in addition to everything else. There's, you know, the, just the, the personal impact and the kids especially, there's, there's food access issues that we're trying to address during mobile food pantries. We've done two of them with our police department in the last two weeks and apartment complexes because people are afraid to leave their homes to get food, so we've been bringing it to the community. And, and we're continually asking a lot of these same questions that you guys are bringing to us and, and working through them. So know that we, we do care and are doing everything that we can to protect our, our community and, and ensure that the constitutional rights, including those of due process of our community members are not violated. We are going to move on to item. To, item A, which is to my rights, thank you, proclamation, which I would like to make. Whereas arts DuPage, arts DuPage has regularly issued official proclamations to all the cities and villages in DuPage County on an annual basis, designating October as Arts DuPage Month. And whereas the arts embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect and imagination of humankind and whereas the arts enrich us as individuals and play a unique role in the lives of our families and our communities. Whereas the arts promote a better understanding of the diversified cultures within our communities and unify us regardless of age, race, and ethnicity. And whereas the art sector in DuPage County consists of two thousand two hundred and seventy-two arts-related businesses and accounts for four point two percent of the total number of businesses in the region, a larger share of the economy than transportation, tourism, agriculture and construction. And whereas the arts provide full-time employment for over fifteen thousand workers in DuPage County. And whereas the arts improve our economy, enrich our civic life, drive tourism and commerce and exert a profound positive influence on the education of our children. And whereas the arts help lead us through the darkest times by lifting our spirits, unifying communities and providing entertainment, they also play a vital role in enlivening our public spaces, driving the economy and elevating the appeal of our country and our county. Says county. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel Bobby, mayor of West Chicago, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-fifth as Arts DuPage Month in the city of West Chicago and call upon our community members to celebrate and promote the arts in DuPage County. We have such a wonderful arts community here in West Chicago, People Made Visible, Gallery Two Hundred, our schools, the District Thirty-three and District Ninety-four, as well as Benjamin and other schools that our, our community members attend. And I would encourage all of us to, if you have not been there recently, visit, visit our local, our local arts exhibits at Gallery Two Hundred, there's numerous local artists that are exhibited there and new things going up all the time. So we're, we're very, we're very lucky to have a, such a vibrant arts community in a town of our size and don't want to, don't want to take that for granted. Part of our desire to elevate the arts in West Chicago is our Gateway Banners Program. And tonight, we are going to announce the, the people's, the twenty twenty-five People's Choice recipients. We want to thank first of all this year's judge, is David here? So, stand up David, David, Linaway, am I saying the last name correctly? Was the judge this, this year, he is the founder of Studio Break, is a local artist as well. And we have, I think in the audience here, some of our local artists, any of you who are here with us this evening that are local artists, please stand up as well, if you would. Let's have a round of applause for that. Thank you for being here. This is the seventeenth year that we've done the cultural arts sponsored summer art banner exhibit. And the theme for this year was, for this year twenty twenty-five was sustenance, sustento. We had sixty-two pieces that were submitted by thirty-four separate artists. And they were from Illinois as well as, as far as Florida and West Virginia. Twenty different Illinois communities were represented and one international community. We had an artist from Uruguay who submitted a, a piece as well. So seventeen of these pieces were selected for exhibition. So seventeen of these pieces were selected for exhibition. And you'll be seeing those around town. And we, we had, we had people vote for the People's Choice recipient for twenty twenty-five. We had two hundred and thirty-two votes that were, that were cast. And we had a hundred and thirteen of those votes go to one of our artists. And that was Kelly Capel. Is Kelly here? So we want to, come on up to the podium, if you would, please. So we want to honor Ms. Capel and thank her for her submission. I understand the piece is Protect Our Oceans. Would you like to say anything about your piece? I'm putting you on the spot here.
I, one acrylic painting I did that I worked probably two years on, finally, when I finished it and then when I saw this contest, just thought it felt relevant right now. So I'm very surprised, just a little bit.
Well, thank you. And we want to go ahead and stand with me here and unveil our twenty twenty-five. Need to be a little taller here.
I can help.
There we go. You want me to hold it? Sure. Our twenty twenty-five People's Choice Award, People's Choice recipient by Kelly Capel, Protect Our Oceans. Kelly, if you, if you don't mind, let's, um, let's do a picture with anyone who, any of the council members that would like to be part of it will, will go up there by the.
That's why you want to take your picture.
You could do it now or afterward. Do it now. We'll, we'll, we'll come out there. So just. Any other council members that want to be in the picture?
Actually, if you want to start a little poster, we can actually have it kind of come down here.
And the commissioners and our judge. Gather around. All ones in the back.
Actually have the right idea.
Yeah. All right. Three, two, one. Wonderful. Thank you.
And finally, I want to announce that next year, twenty twenty-six, for twenty twenty-six. I'm going to be stole my notes. It's probably me. Next year, we will be having a new theme. And is Heidi still? Red, white, and blue. That's what it is. Our theme for twenty twenty-six is red, white, and blue. So you can start preparing for. Yes, yes. So that is not by coincidence that next, next summer will be our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence and the forming of our country. So red, white, and blue will be the theme for next year. That brings us to our presentation for, as we've been going through our budget process. We have been trying to have these public workshop-type presentations to be as transparent as we can about the decisions that we're making with the community's money. And so this evening, I believe we have Mr. Patel sitting here. We have Mahul Patel, who is going to come and give us a presentation on the sewer and water portion of our budget. So we have our, what we've been mostly talking about so far has been the, 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 the general budget of the city. But we have, we have our, our business-type accounts, which is the sewer and water and a couple other smaller things, which account for a, a very large share of, of our city's, of our city's budget. And so because of that, we treat that as sort of a separate, we're treating that as sort of a separate presentation this evening so that you can understand the decisions, so that we can all understand the decisions that are being made. Yes, and before Mr. Patel starts, we have a, an update, which is really good news that Ms. Messino is going to make about the general budget portion of things, which we've been discussing now for a couple of months. And this is a good reminder that this is a process. And when Mr. Patel is speaking about things tonight, things are not set in stone. It is a dynamic, moving process. Eight weeks ago, we brought to you a bunch of these things, and things have progressed. And now we've got some good news.
So after two months of detailed budget work by staff, I am pleased to report that the fiscal year twenty twenty-six general fund budget is balanced. This is moving from a one-point-one-million-dollar deficit to a balanced budget while still supporting key priorities like new events, some parades, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary activities, code modernization, and investment in economic development. Primarily, the most recent improvements were related to increased revenue expectations, including one of the red light cameras that as of today is back in operation. I want to thank staff for working so diligently and going back to the drawing board many times over through this budget process to get us to this point. Also want to thank our council and our community for taking the time to engage with us through this entirely new workshop process. It's been a really great experience, and we appreciate your patience as we're all kind of building this plane as we fly. Now, to that point, now that we have general fund in a very nice wrapped-up position, Public Works Director Mahul.
Let me say just one, one more word on that. So last time we spoke, just for clarity, we had an eight-thousand-dollar, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit in our budget for twenty twenty-six. And so we were working really hard to figure out how to make up for that. We had sort of what we kind of presented as sort of the first-tier cuts that we could make. And then, you know, more invasive second-tier cuts and, and so on. And so this balancing that has occurred is with only some of the first-tier cuts having been made. And so it's, it, again, just to reiterate, our staff has been working overtime, literally. Not that they get paid for overtime, but, but they have done a, a tremendous job in, in finding ways to make that happen. And that has, that has a lot of really positive ramifications for next year. So with no further ado, Mr. Patel.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me all right? Yeah. Excellent. All right. So water and sewer funds. Two weeks ago, I was up here presenting the capital improvement plan. This, tonight, I'm going to be presenting to you water and sewer fund. Water and sewer is enterprise fund. Basically, what we charge to provide water and sewer to the communities. That's what funds all the water and sewer-related activities. It's one of the two funds that we manage in Public Works. Let's go to the next slide, please. So what does it really actually fund? On the water side of things, this is our infrastructure at glance, right? This is what we manage within the fourteen-and-a-half square miles of geographically that we cover. It's one hundred and forty-seven miles of distribution network. This is basically the pipes that actually come to our centralized water treatment plant, where we actually treat the water and then bring it back out into the distribution network throughout the city. We have a nine-million-gallon capacity water treatment plant. This is a lime softening plant. We have eight miles of raw water main, nine different wells throughout the city. They actually bring water to the centralized plant, and then we treat it there, and then we put it back out into the system for consumption. We have four shallow wells. Average depth of those shallow wells are about three hundred and twenty-five feet. We have five deep walls. Average depth of those is about thirteen ninety. We have two elevated towers in this city, Hawthorne Lane, which is five hundred thousand gallons in capacity there, and Fremont Tower, which is two hundred and fifty thousand gallons in capacity. In addition to that, on the distribution network, we have twenty-five hundred valves. These are basically the isolation valves. If you have a water main break, we will look at those isolation valves, try to isolate the water main break to a scenario. So not a whole lot of people are impacted by the actual repairs that we have to make. Over two hu, two thousand biohydrants and approximately seventy-three hundred water meters and services in town. Of those seventy-three hundred services, about eight hundred of those are lead service lines. And then we have two booster stations, one's on Bishop Street and Forest, and the other one's on Alina Drive. The purpose of the booster station is where we experience low pressures throughout the, the system. Those booster stations help us keep the PSI, or pounds per square inch pressure, up in those distribution network. Next slide, please. On the sewer side of things, we have one hundred and six miles of sanitary collection system. So this is all the domestic waste that goes from household industries, commercial properties, that goes into the sanitary sewers and goes to our seven-point-four-million-gallon regional wastewater treatment plant that's located off of Fifty-Nine and Savannah Boulevard. We have thirteen lift stations that also comprise of the collection system. So where gravity doesn't work, we have a lift station. It pulls the sewage up and dumps it into the next sewer downstream. Fifteen hundred sanitary manholes. We don't, can't turn this distribution or collection system network without coming to a sanitary manhole. So if we got to make a turn to go down a street, we need a manhole there. And about sixty-five hundred sanitary services that also are part of this system. So a lot of our infrastructure, that this is all underground infrastructure, right? So people, most of this stuff, people don't see it, people don't think about it. It's aging, and there's a lot of inadequate infrastructure that we have in the city at the moment. We did a hydraulic model study on our entire water distribution network three years ago in twenty twenty-two. So we simulated a lot of different conditions with different types of inputs to be put into the system. And when we were doing this study, thirty-five percent of our water distribution pipe network is over fifty years of age. Our wastewater treatment plant is forty-two years old. Our oldest water meters in town are about fifteen years old now. Typical life expectancy is about fifteen to twenty years on those. When the meters are getting to that age, they start to be inaccurate on the low side. So they don't read as much. That results in lower accuracy and lower revenue. Storage, this is just the amount of storage we have. Our average daily demand in this community, seasonally adjusted, its peaks in summer, slows down in the winter. If I take it over a twelve-month average, it's two-point-two-five million gallons a day. So on any given day, that's how much water the community is using. But what we have in storage today is one-point-seven-five million gallons. So we don't even, even have a day's worth of storage should the treatment plan go out of order. We, City did a study back in two thousand and eleven. Back then, our average daily demand was actually three-point-six million gallons. And based on those numbers, the recommended storage was four-point-five million gallons. That number has gone down to two-point-five today. So we believe about three-point-five million gallons of storage will be sufficient for City's need. Twenty-seven percent of our water distribution network is undersized, meaning there's diameter piping that brings water to the community is six inches or smaller in diameter. Why that matters is because there's a lot of choke points in the system. So that limits the flow to certain parts of town and limits the fire protection in those areas. So thirty-seven and a half miles of our system is six inches in smaller. So when we look at fire flow calculations, in most urban communities, fire flow is a requirement. If you look at our code for residential protection, we need thousand gallons per minute. For commercial, it's fifteen hundred gallons per minute. And for industrial, it's three thousand gallons per minute. So if you just calculate those out for a ten-hour requirement, which is what our code requires, our storage requirement will be a lot more than what we're recommending. Next slide, please. Continuing on, on the aging and inadequate infrastructure. Hawthorne Tower is built in nineteen sixty-seven. Fremont Tower is from nineteen fifty-nine. We have nine walls I mentioned. Average age of those walls is thirty-six and a half years almost. We have thirteen lift stations. Average age of that is thirty-seven point two years. Our water treatment plant, which was commissioned in two thousand and five, is now twenty years old. All this to say is that all this infrastructure is aging, right? And if you don't keep up with the maintenance of it or replacement of it in a due time, deferring maintenance is just going to cost a lot more down the road. Next slide, please. So revenue and expenses. So this is what a part of your proposed budget looks like at this moment. Water revenue, forty-one million dollars. This is based on water consumption sales. In this projection, there are pre-approved twenty-six rates in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight that are currently part of our code. So our revenue projection currently don't include those pre-approved rates in this projection. So water service charges are basically consumption numbers, forty-one million. IPASRF loan, we have two major projects that we're looking at doing. I mentioned there's about eight hundred lead service lines in this town. We need to replace those. Fourteen-point-nine million dollars. That's a price tag on those. And the elevated water tower that we need to build to provide more storage in the communities, that's about six-point-nine million. So we would be applying for state revolving fund loans. We would be competing against the entire state of Illinois to compete for these funds. There are two buckets of loan that the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency has. One's for lead service line replacement, which is at zero percent interest rate, and one's for other water and sewer infrastructure, which is at a low interest rate, about two-point-one at this time. So the lead service line replacement would be a separate loan, and elevated water tower should be choose to report with those. That would be a separate law. Assuming we actually make and we get the loans when we compete against the entire state of Illinois for these. Grand revenue of eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. We do a lot of major roadway improvement projects in these towns, and we make comprehensive improvements. So when we're looking at roadway improvement projects, we're looking at from the bottom up. We're looking at all the underground infrastructure that's beneath the roadway and making sure they had all the underground infrastructure is in good shape before we actually go and do the roadway replacement or roadway resurfacing. So one of these grants is Community Development Black, Community Development Black grant is eligible for only residential neighborhoods and low to moderate income areas. It's comes through a federal grant through HUD, and it's administered by DuPage County. So we have a few projects in the next five years that we're going to look for applying for CDDG grants. And should we get those grants, this is the component of the water sewer infrastructure that we're going to have to be replacing as part of those projects. So total revenue is projected to be about sixty-two-point-eight million over the next five years. On the expenses side, operations. So we have two components. We have the distribution component and the production component. Distribution is basically everything outside of the water treatment plant, and the production is everything within the water treatment plant. So the operation is nineteen-point-five million dollars for the distribution network outside of the water treatment plant over the next five years. And the water production is thirteen and a half million. Capital for the water distribution network is. Capital for the water distribution network is at thirty two point two million, largely because of the twenty point nine on the other side of the equation. Um and then the capital on the water treatment plant side is three point seven million over the next five years. And then once we, if we get a loan, we have a loan debt service that we have to pay over twenty year period. And that's a debt service that we'll be accounting for over the next five years. Uh the expenses at seventy one point two million dollars with a deficit of eight point three million. Next slide please. Actually, one thing I should mention is that on the operation side, our twenty twenty six operation budget excluding capital is actually three percent lower than twenty twenty five. Uh the water treatment is two point six percent lower than the twenty twenty five numbers. And then in twenty seven, I have a two percent increase and twenty eight, I have a three percent increase in both respective budgets. So very flat. Uh this is just a staff shot of what revenue and expenses look like over the next five years, broken down by year. Looks like. Uh on the sewer side of things, uh sewer service charges, this is basically what we collect uh when we bill for sewer charges to the community. Thirty six point two five million is what we're projecting. Again, it does not include the pre-approved uh rates that we are having budget on in the poll right now, twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight. And then the grant is a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant, uh which is for some site improvements at one of our lift stations. So a total of revenue of thirty six point three million over the next five years. And the expenses, operations side, thirty four point six million over the next five and capital of eight point seven million, total of forty three point four million. Again, to exclude the capital, um and the operation budget is actually four percent lower in twenty twenty six. And then uh two percent lower in twenty twenty seven from twenty twenty six numbers and a three percent increase in twenty twenty eight over twenty twenty seven numbers. Okay, that makes sense. Next slide please.
So just wanted to
Yes.
make clear, cuz I know it the so these deficits that we're that we're seeing budgeted over the next five years, fifteen million dollars in total roughly. And that does not uh that does not factor for the pre-approved increases uh in sewer and water rates.
Correct. Um so if those rates uh those rates that are actually in the uh twenty six, twenty seven, and eight, if they were implemented on the water side, the revenue, water service charge jumps from actually, I ran the number earlier today. It jumps from forty one million to forty five million. Um and on the sewer side, it jumps um from thirty six million to forty one million. Um and so twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight, you would see an increase and then no increase in twenty nine and thirty. That's what uh my assumption is based on.
And again, just for clarity for everyone in 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 the room. Uh so in uh around twenty twenty three, we've uh the council voted on pre-approved five percent increases in sewer and water rates for twenty twenty six through, what, through twenty?
Two, seven, twenty eight.
Through twenty twenty eight or nine?
Eight or nine.
Yeah. So um so that's what we're talking about uh in terms of the the pre-approved rate increases.
And I have a slide later in the presentation.
I'll remember.
Uh I was just gonna provide a little more clarification, but yeah, so pre-approved, I guess, makes it seem like it's kind of through for the next hundred years. Unfortunately, it's not the case. Um like pre-approved as in this is ideally what what we would raise them over a short period of time as opposed to, um I'm sure we all experienced it, but we have the fifteen years of no increases and then very large one of this. Going by this way, we'd kind of incrementally do it over time, which would be a little bit easier. But um in conversations when we were approving all this, it was up under the assumption that each year we would come back and have that discussion to decide if we're actually.
Yeah, and I have a couple of slices in there in the presentation to kind of walk you through that. So our next slide please. Yeah, this is a, again, a bar graph to show in revenue versus expenses over the next five years. Um that we just talked about, open down by anyone you can. One more. Okay, uh so the water C I P program, what does that include? A lot of times we get a question, how do we actually select the projects that need to be completed? Uh so so a few things uh that come into uh consideration when we're selecting projects. One, if you have any grant funding deadlines, uh we wanna make sure we get those deadlines, so we use up those funds before the deadlines. I talked about the the payment uh reconstruction or resurfacing projects when we're looking at projects from the bottom up and making sure all the underground infrastructure is in sufficient condition before we actually do the roadway work. Sanitary sewer evaluation survey, this is basically uh dealing with the informed infiltration. I'm not getting too technical in this stuff. Uh we have done a lot of uh analysis uh over the latter years that basically does like a smoke testing. And then you see where all the deficiencies are in a sanitary collection system. Um or so if you, what you don't want is water, rainwater infiltrating or getting into the sanitary sewer. And then you actually have to treat it on the wastewater side of things. Right? So we find these deficiencies and we try to make sure that we we have those pipes from within. So we put a sewer liner in there. Uh that sewer liner basically covers the the main trunk line plus five feet on each lateral walls to conceal up those connections uh to prevent those infiltrations from going into the sanitary sewer that we have to ultimately treat at the end of the day. Waterman break history, I actually have a slide next uh and a couple of slides here that will show you the waterman break history. So that's another consideration, age of the underground infrastructure. Let's always on replacement. This is a public safety issue, right? Uh we, this is an unfunded mandate first of all, and it's also a big public safety issue that we need to consider. We are doing a lot of uh the required testing and reporting by the I E P A. Uh for example, we have called that copper rule revision. We have to have sixty sample sites throughout the community that has to be let service locations. And we have to semi annually test, collect samples from there, take it to the lab, test them, report to the I E P A. And these are voluntary based sixty sample site locations where we have to collect samples from. So we have to continue to do this until all uh all of that service and replacement in community are completely replaced. And that is letting copper rule revision. So we don't know if that's actually gonna go away at that point. Um so that's costing us, this started uh in twenty twenty four. So it's costing about eighteen thousand dollars a year to do all the testing and reporting that we have to do. Um again, there's no funding mechanism for that, right? This is just all the community has just been asked to replace that service lines throughout the state of Illinois. And we've been given about ten years to do this. Um every community is jumping on it right now, trying to get this all done at the same time, which means limited contractors to do this work. Prices are getting inflated. Uh we're competing for the same pot of money through the I P A loans. Um so it's really difficult uh to figure out how we're gonna actually fund these projects. Anytime um the new I P A loan requirements, actually, one of the one of the criteria for the loan is actually they'll look at census tract and uh the income in the census tract area. And uh while we stand a good chance if we're south north of I A D, but when we're competing against south of I A D communities, um we're not really standing a chance in that category. Um one of the other unfunded mandates is phosphorus limits. Uh so this is on the wastewater side of things. Again, this is an unfunded mandate. A lot of the phosphorus that goes into the waterways after we treat the water, uh we have to test the source, uh the point source at that location to make sure that our, every five years when our permit gets renewed, we gotta make sure that we're below that threshold and we are not violating those numbers. Uh so up until now, we were um, there is a group called DuPage River Soft Creek Work Group. Uh we discharge our water to uh west branch of DuPage River. So we're a part of that coalition for a long time. And the whole point of that coalition is basically they are basically advocating for all those communities that discharge into DuPage River who are their tributaries and uh trying to basically delay the permit limit implementation with the I P A. Um and for for that, uh we've been funding a lot of like in-stream projects. Uh but a lot of the in-stream projects that were happening were downstream over Chicago. And we weren't really seeing a whole lot of impact from those. So we had a decision to make when our uh tenures were coming up, whether to actually make a capital improvement on wastewater treatment plan and reduce our phosphorus limits at the source or continue to prep on those in-stream projects. We decided we're gonna actually go and make some improvements at our wastewater treatment plant. So we're we're just about wrapping up a five million dollar project at the wastewater treatment plant now. Uh should be done in the next couple uh months. In our new permit cycle that starts in October twenty twenty six, we'll have plenty of time uh to look at what this phosphorus limits are, what where we're gonna be compared to where the phosphorus limits are gonna be set by the I P A, if they're gonna be set by the I P A. They're looking at a lot of different limits at this point, so. Next one. This is a breakdown of our five years sewer capital and water and sewer capital improvement, where the the capital improvement dollars are going by category. One point eight million dollars in the wall houses. I mentioned there's nine wall houses. I had a thirty six year age. Um majority of the controls are outdated and original to those in each wall houses. So they need massive upgrades. Um twenty point seven million dollars in distribution system. Again, this is largely because of the lead service line replacement project. Eight point six million in the storage improvements, six point nine of that is the elevated water tower. Three point seven million at the water treatment plant and eight point six million in our sanitary collection system. And that just kind of gives you a map of where those projects are located for the next five years. Um I mentioned one of the criteria is the waterman break history that we look at when we're looking at which projects make the cut. So this is actually a heat map that we were producing by the twenty twenty two study that we did on our water distribution service uh network. So you can see every every star represents a waterman break. And this is just a data sample point from two thousand seventy, twenty twenty two. Since the study was completed, we've had another over a hundred breaks that are not actually shown on this map at this time. But seventy percent of those breaks that you see on these maps are on the water main, uh that are fifty plus years of age. And the same study recommended the city should be replacing about one point five miles of water main per year, which is about eight thousand feet. Our current replacement is about twelve hundred feet a year, uh which will probably take about one hundred fifty, one hundred seventy five years to replace all of it. Um and that's assuming hundred to hundred and twenty five year lifespan of the pipe, which is unrealistic. Next slide please. All right, let's uh start about the water rates and the sewer rates. Next slide please. All right. So as far as I can go back, two thousand and five, that's when the water plant was uh initiated. So you can see in the the fourth column, um the top four rows, um we used to charge our water rates per hundred cubic feet. And if you convert that to per thousand gallons, right, that's three thousand eighty eight cents for the water rates. That started in two thousand and six and that was the same rate all the way until July of twenty twenty two. And on the sewer side, there were some small increments uh increases throughout those that time period. We went from three fifty eight in two thousand and six to five sixty one um in July of twenty twenty two. And then in July uh of twenty twenty three, uh went to, or actually, I'm sorry, July twenty twenty two, we increased it to five dollars and seven dollars respectively. And then uh July of twenty twenty three, it was went to nine and ten. And then in twenty twenty five, which is current rate, is nine forty five per thousand gallons and ten dollars and fifty cents per thousand gallons on the sewer side. On the sewer commercial side, there's a little bit of an increase higher than the commercial uh residential side because of the pre-treatment program. Some of these industries actually have to do a pre-treatment before they can actually discharge to a sanitary collection system. So that's why that increases there. So this is a a weight comparison of uh similar sized communities based on square miles and population. So the top five or six of these are basically geographically about the same size. Uh maybe much smaller actually, except for Dallas Grove. Um but I wanted to kind of show you this slide to see where our water sewer rates are in compared to all these communities in DuPage County that we're seeing here. So anything that's in red, that's a higher rate than ours. And anything that's in green, that's a lower rate than ours. And take these rates with a little bit of grain of salt because uh there's a lot of nuances to water and sewer rates per community. Uh and to boil it down to per thousand gallons is very difficult task. We've done our best to actually get it to this point. But some of these communities will have, you know, uh a higher water base charge or a minimum charge or something like that, right? Like, for example, West Chicago, of course, two thousand four hundred ninety one gallons, we don't charge them. Um but then these other communities that were actually front load some of their minimum charges. And some of the other communities will have tier system on their charges and what have you. To do boil it down to per thousand gallons is is uh it's a task. Uh so we've done our best here to uh uh show you this. But every but two communities are higher on the water side. And mind you, all other DuPage County communities don't actually have a water treatment plant. They are all Lake Michigan source of water, so they get their water from DuPage Water Commission. So they do not have the nine walls or water treatment plant to maintain that we do have to maintain. On the sewer side, you can see a lot of green, right? And you said, why are sewer rates so high? So valid question, but there's an asterisk next to a lot of them. That's because a lot of those communities actually send their sewage to a sanitary district. Uh sanitary districts are basically separate taxing entities. Um so their charges are actually going on their property tax notice. Uh there. So that's why their collection system charges can be as low, cuz all they're doing is maintaining a collection system and they're not having to do water uh wastewater treatment in their communities. So the only uh two on this list that actually have their own wastewater treatment plan is Olmsted and Addison. And Olmsted is higher and Addison is pretty comparable. Next slide. These are some of the communities around us. Uh the purpose of this slide is that because Aurora, Algen and Montgomery actually have similar water treatment like ours. And uh the rest of them are pretty much neighboring communities. So I wanna kind of show this slide here as well. Again, um some of these communities uh obviously are uh sending their base to uh sanitary districts or in the Kane County is mostly Fox Metro uh wastewater reclamation district. Then uh on the water side of these, compared to Aurora and Algen, they have a lot more accounts that are actually funding their systems. Batavia, for example, actually has a four percent utility tax on theirs. Uh they didn't have too much time to actually dive into that, but uh that actually adds to their um the waters, water rates. Again, uh trying to boil it down to thousand gallons, our rate is uh is a difficult task. But this is uh our best uh representation of what we found on their websites. Looks like. Uh last two slides is basically summarize the chart here, just to kind of show you where everything falls. All right, next slide. All right, my key takeaway is here. Um similar sized communities aren't directly comparable, uh as we seen in um you know, geographically, uh communities, cuz we have the same amount of population, but their population density could be higher than ours. They would be much bigger communities than us, but they also may have uh a lot of uh unincorporated areas or a lot of other uh parts of town that are don't require water and sewer surfaces. West Chicago is the only DuPage County community that has a centralized water treatment plan and a wastewater treatment plan. I mentioned most of all the beach community, commu- communities, except for Warrenville, which is a much smaller community than ours. Um are served by DuPage Water Commission. They don't have active roles, mainly, they don't have a water treatment plant to maintain. Many communities are served served by separate sanitary district, they are independent taxing bodies, their cost is actually listed on their property tax rolls. Uh all this to say is that rates should be based on infrastructure maintained locally, not by population, geographic, or anywhere. Um I do have a recommendation, which is not currently in our budget, is to actually do a water sewer rate study in twenty twenty six. Um it will be a third party that does the water sewer rate study to kind of show us where we are um and where we should be. Next slide please. So these are the the pre-planned, I should say, not pre-approved, uh pre-planned rate schedule. Uh in uh effective July, January one, twenty twenty six, the water rates are scheduled to go to nine ninety per thousand gallons. Sewer residential at eleven, sewer commercial at eleven thirty four. And then you can see twenty seven and twenty eight rates on there. So what we did on the bottom table there is actually, we took those rates and made a hypothetical example of a bi-monthly residential water and sewer bill that uses about fifteen thousand gallons over that two month period and has a three, four inch meter. And uh you can see uh their water sewer bill in uh twenty twenty five or just it should have been twenty twenty six on the second column there. Um but it's about a four percent difference uh in a given year. Um I think that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you.
Now if you can answer any questions. Okay.
Um you answered this, but um I understand that um we we did the uh I E P A uh loan for the
That's what it says?
Yes. Um what is the criteria again, if you're looking forward to, if someone can, we can approve for that?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so again, so I mentioned there's two different pots of money, right? Let's service line replacement throughout the state of Illinois, their their pot is about two hundred and fifty million, two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty million in any given year. So all communities are applying for that same pot of money. Now, you know, we broke our eight hundred lead service lines into two separate projects, and we wanted to do it in two different shots. And so we applied for two separate loan applications in the last four rounds, neither of them got selected. So the way I E P A will look at it is the income threshold is one of the thresholds they'll look at. There's a lot of other criteria, and I'll be honest, I don't know all those criteria. But the income threshold is actually one of the newer criteria that they introduce based on the census trap where the project is actually taking place. If you were previously, they used to look at median household income for the entire community. If they look at the median household income, we wouldn't stand a chance. But because they're looking at census traps separately now, where the actual project's going to take place, we do have a chance. But again, when I'm competing with with the same two hundred and sixty million dollars that every community in state of Illinois is on the same timeline is competing for. It's it's hard to get those funding. So there was an intended funding list that comes out, and then there is a secondary list. So if any of those intended funding list communities actually finish their projects previously, or criteria has changed, or they weren't ready for it, then they go to like a B list, right? So we were like number sixteen on the B list. There was fifteen other communities in front of us on the B list. So the competition is huge. Previously, the competition wasn't as aggressive. But in the last couple of years, the competition's really taken off.
Alden Ramorano?
Alden Santiago, did you do that? So when you say you broke the project up into two different phases, can we strategically break it up so that one of them maybe weren't tied to the monetary standpoint?
We did. We actually did. So we we actually broke it down, and there's a scoring mechanism based on all these criterias. And one of our projects had a score of almost like two hundred, which like in the previous years, like, you know, probably would have been slammed down. But this time, a lot of time, there's so many other communities in front of us, even they're taking five million, two million, three million here and there, it just takes a two fifty away from us.
You said that we're expecting an eight million dollar loss waterside, then said go with the pre-planned rates. Then our our income goes from forty one to forty five, so we'll still have a four million dollar loss.
Correct? Yeah, so again, this is based on the current capital improvement plan that we have proposed, right? So it's, if you move forward with everything, yes, the deficit exists, right? But there's decisions to be made, whether the current capital improvements, or how are you going to, I mentioned the budget on the operation side is already reduced year over year. So operation side is really tight, so where the difference is, is the capital.
That's what I promise. You said there's testing on the water. Are we able to see the what comes up, like the result?
Yeah, so those are sixty volunteer sites, right? So when the I E P A came out with the mandate that you have to test sixty locations, right? We send out letters to all the eight hundred services that actually have lead service line, and then we were selecting volunteer based and locations. So the first sixty that said, yes, we will participate, those are the sixty on the left, and then we have a few on standby list, if you would. That if one of our sixty drops out, or it's hard to get a hold of, then we will go with the next one, just to make sure that we hit the timelines semi-annually that we're supposed to be hitting. Any other question?
Yeah, this is something that we had talked about previously, but I had asked how much it would cost for us to go ahead and test all eight hundred houses and.
I have that number.
Yeah.
Yeah, so assuming, right, our current lead service line replacement plan, if we don't get the loan, right, is it's a proposed plan, right, is to replace about seven percent of our total lead service line population. So that what comes out to be about fifty seven lead service lines per year over the next ten years. So if we were to start ruining those fifty seven lines per year over the next ten years, our eight hundred lines goes down by fifty seven per year. And the numbers that we actually ran to do the same testing that you're talking about, Alderman, is to pass the N R T P Y, the water filters, over the twenty year or ten year period, whatever I calculated, it was about one point nine million dollars.
One point nine for the ten years. So that would be test to any any houses that still have lead service lines over the next ten years, assuming the slowest progression, assuming that we are for ten ten years unable to get the loan. And so we're just doing it in the incremental manner. We would we would test every once a year, the houses that still had not been had the lead service lines replaced and provide them with filters. And that would cost one point nine million over that total over ten years.
And that's assuming we are replacing fifty seven lines with local funds on an annual basis.
So there's going to be a charge to the homeowner for that?
For lead service lines? That is not our intent. We were going to look forward to replacing the entire lead service line.
Then go as far as just into the.
The requirement is eighteen inches or the first shut off valve inside the house, whatever is short.
And it's up to them to make sure they get a good place foot in the house, right?
Once we get to that eighteen inches, you know, shut off valve, what's inside the house, that's not what we're requiring to place. We don't know if there.
I mean, I'm saying there's not going to be a request for an ordinance or anything like that to change, to make.
Your guess is as good as mine.
I don't have a good guess.
So. So what we need to provide tonight for staff is an informal recommendation on whether we want them to pursue down the pursue the route of doing the schedule, the pre-scheduled cost increases. Or if there are other alternatives that we would want them to explore. And I'll go ahead and and say that one of the alternatives that that I've asked them to look at is what would it what would it cost for us to leave the residential rates alone this year, but to offset that by an increase in the commercial? We have a different pricing system for commercial industrial, not in the water supply, but in the on the sewer side of things. So so that was one, one request that I made is to see what those numbers would look like if for two thousand twenty six, we were to freeze the residential, but make up for it with an increase in the in the commercial and industrial. Oh, yeah, I do. Is Nikki here still? Is that a number that we have at this point, or? If you want to give us an update, that would be wonderful.
Okay, so as we discussed, what's proposed in the ordinance is the residential sewer rate to increase from ten fifty to eleven dollars for one thousand gallons. With the pre-treatment charge already increasing from thirty two to thirty four. So as the ordinance stands right now, the commercial rate would increase to eleven dollars and thirty four cents. Now, if the residential rate remained at ten dollars and fifty cents, and there was no increase to eleven dollars, then the commercial industrial rate would need to increase to twelve dollars and eight cents to offset that projected loss.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And in in commercial disposal rates as they stand right now are what?
Ten dollars and eighty two cents.
And eighty two.
We go up to twelve dollars and eight cents if there was no residential.
Okay. I'm being told that you may have some other data that you have free to share.
I did take that a step further than, and I looked at, well, what would the projection for the commercial industrial rate look like if instead of keeping the rate at ten dollars and fifty cents for residential, but not going to eleven? So what would it look like if we raised the residential to ten dollars and seventy five cents?
Okay.
Kind of in the middle. So what that meant was the commercial industrial rate then would go to eleven dollars and seventy two cents.
Okay.
So if you'd like me to keep going, I did look at a couple of our larger water users and projected out, well, what would this increase look like if we raise their rate to twelve dollars and eight cents, for example? So the utility bill that I recalculated, that meant an increase in their sewer charges of fifty three hundred dollars for that one bill.
Which, what percent of an increase would that represent?
I didn't actually calculate out the percent. And then the same example, but if we, I recalculated the bill, if we went from ten dollars and fifty cents to ten dollars and seventy five cents on the residential side, increase the commercial industrial rate to eleven dollars and seventy two cents, that meant an increase of about thirty eight hundred dollars on that particular bill.
Okay.
So just a couple of different ways to look at it there.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, in in rough numbers, well, on the residential side, then, in those different scenarios that that Nikki looked at for us, it would be, instead of the pre-planned five percent increase, the first scenario was a zero increase, and the second one was a two point five percent increase. And the and the corresponding increases for, on the commercial side, I mean, someone else can do the math probably faster than me, but would be somewhere around a thirteen percent increase or or something under under maybe around nine percent increase in those two scenarios. So what do what do we want to direct the council, excuse me, direct staff to to do, you know, are there other numbers or alternatives you would like information on? Yes, Alden Ramorano?
Based on what I heard, I mean, it seems like splitting the difference with Marshall seems to be a viable solution where residentially, we wouldn't have to go up as much. We still achieve the same results, and Marshall goes up a little bit, residential goes up a little bit. Still kind of gets the number that we need to get to.
Yeah, correct, Nikki, that's only on the sewer side, right? That's only on the sewer side.
Okay, so that's leaving the residential that did not factor in any any reduction in the residential supply side.
Not for water.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Any any final thoughts? So at this point, yes, Alderman Demus?
You know, I was trying to retrace in my mind why we came to the decision we came to about increasing it incrementally over the next several years. And from what I could remember from those meetings were that the fact is, as you showed in your slides, that car rate is surrounding areas, or whatever you want to do with population, however you want to break it down. We were under, but increasing would catch us up to the surrounding communities, so to speak. Excluding their other rates that we can't account for, that they're paying other, whatever those are. And I think that was the reason we came up with the incremental, so that it wouldn't feel like it was such a big hit at one time. I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to reducing it and then, you know, increasing commercially, but eventually, we got to get that rate up there somehow. I mean, I can't see, especially with all these projects, that I have to be done, and I don't, unless it's going to come from somewhere else, but I just don't know where else it would come from at this time. So I don't, you know, I'm kind of stuck here.
Alden Myers?
Yes, we have, I think of it as also that, so, you know, industrial users also have a property tax bill, and do they pay like different property tax as their industrial versus residential?
Yeah, it's a different code.
Yeah, so I mean, it makes sense, there's kind of like a different difference of application here. But I do feel like everybody kind of expects everything is going to get more expensive. And so it seems a little unfair to say that, you know, okay, well, everything's getting more expensive, but only the one group has to pay it, the other one doesn't. And if you keep going down this path, and every year you're like, okay, we're just going to keep raising the commercial rates above and beyond, you know, they're going to start looking around at other communities at that table and say, you know, my sewer is now twenty dollars, even though my water is like ten dollars. So it's already like a little different, it's like ten dollars, eleven dollars, but then just keep pushing that that the commercial sewer rate higher and higher, it just starts to get kind of like compete, you know? And it's only because we have a way of of charging separately for commercial users the sewer rate. So if we were to do something, I would almost say that maybe you should be doing like water and sewer separately for commercial users, if that's really kind of the path they're going to have.
And I and I think that, yes, Alden Myers raises the point that, you know, this is not some like long-term solution, that, hey, let's just keep throwing it on the commercial, you know? That 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 is not a a path that I don't think anyone wants to go down. I think two two things. One, our residents are reeling from a very large rate hike, which they just got. And so that is, my desire is to ease that a little bit. I do understand that costs go up for all of us on almost everything every year. And I agree that bringing the up a, you know, a little bit each year makes a lot more sense than waiting sixteen years and then all of a sudden having a huge price hike. But that brings me to my second point is that I I think from what Mr. Patel said and from my conversations with them, also, we just, we really don't know where we stand in relation to other communities. It is just like, if we can go back to that one slide that showed that compared us to the the first slide of the two that compares us to other communities. I mean, they did their best to do an apples to apples on the water supply. But basically, on on the sewer side, we kind of threw our hands up and said, we just don't know, because a as has been said, most of all those communities, all the ones that have the asterisk, they are paying part of their water bill through their property taxes. And there's just no way for us to, in essence. Thank you, thank you for the correction. Part of their sewer bill through their property taxes. And so that's why there's just no apples to apples comparison. So what Mr. Patel had recommended was a a was a study, water sewer rate, a water sewer rate study, which I think you said is something, well, we don't, we don't know what it would cost. But we would obviously get those numbers before we move ahead on anything. But I I think I would definitely informally agree with me or don't agree with me here, but I would really like to see what it would cost to do that study so that we could delve into that a little bit, a little bit better, and and into some of the nuance of how do we how do we compare residentially, how do we compare commercially industrially? And get to some of those, some of those questions. So I believe Alderman Hallit had a comment to make.
Yes. The big thing about any time there's any increases.
The big thing about anytime there's any increases in the price of anything, you know what's happening with it. But as my father used to say, there's no such thing as a free lunch. You've got to earn it, you've got to work for it, you got to pay for it. And I understand it creates problems for people sometimes, but you just can't keep always saying, just like Alderman Myers was mentioning, keep jacking it up here, but eventually sooner or later it's going to come back. And those that we've been holding it off for some long, it's going to be a big explosion to them when they do get a higher rate. And then what's their attitude going to be? How come all of a sudden I've stayed five years at the same rate and now all of a sudden I'm up five hours? We got to look at this sensibly. Not, I I realize your sympathy for people and I'm not in any way um uh criticizing you for that or anything, but we got to look at this. You can't get things for free anymore in this society. And I'd love to get them, believe me, like anybody here, I, you know, I'd like to get a free Cadillac or something, it's own you know, po- a publisher's clearinghouse or something like that, but it doesn't work that way anymore. Things cost. And we've got to always take that perspective on it and go from that standpoint here.
Right. And and I mean, this is the hand that we're dealt because these these aging infrastructure items. Uh, we we've been deferring the maintenance on them, and so that's why we are now having to um now having to have a a a major um set of expenditures, just like we talked about the roads that was you know, we're now having to 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 do a lot of expenses in the next few years because we put that off. And I agree with you, um Alderman Hallit, that we should not be putting off um uh, you know, these uh, we can't defer maintenance and not expect to pay the piper down the road. And I don't um, I don't want us to do that. And that's kind of what we're, that's kind of why we're in this situation right now and we're trying to resolve it, but it is a, it's not, it's not necessarily a yes or no, but it is a bit of a balancing act here. You know, I asked Mr. Patel, what does it mean if we, if we don't have that fifteen million dollars in our budget for the next five years? And he told me it it would mean um m- more deferred maintenance. He told me it would mean um cutting out some of the capital improvement uh projects that uh that would include things like pump stations.
Yes, so here we go back a few slides for that uh estimated water and sugar expenses, right? So if you're if you're looking at the revenue projected, that's right. If you're looking at the projected revenue, one north or forward. Yeah, so if you're looking at the uh if you add on the water side, right, if you just look at the operations alone, it's about thirty three million. And the water service charge is about forty one million, right? So there's a little bit of a difference there, right? But so that allows us to do some capital improvements on the water side. But if you go on the sewer side, it's pretty much a wash, right? Uh thirty six point two and thirty four point six, right? So very little margin for do any kind of significant capital improvements. Assuming, you know, the the rates or, you know, will stay as is, the consumption stays as is, we don't lose any major industries here and uh keep building what we're building today.
And so we're talking about well, as I see it, three different things here. One is how do we compare to other communities? And it would be good to know that. But at the end of the day, our costs are what our costs are. And so no matter how we compare to other communities, we still got to figure out how are we going to pay the bills and keep our infrastructure working? And then thirdly, is how do we make it as equitable as possible? And is looking at the commercial industrial versus residential? Uh, is there anything there that we can that we can do to to make make things more equitable? I don't know. But those are the questions that I would, I would like staff to give us more information and more data on. Yes.
Uh, is there an expectation that we want to finish this study before we make this decision?
I don't think it's possible.
Okay, then I I'm I'm not sure that we can use that as a guideline this year. I mean, we can use it next year. But my my personal belief is that um this this was a pre-planned increase. Um, we already, we charge industrial user or sewer for a very specific reason. Because, you know, it it costs more to treat. Um, but to go down this path and that we're saying like now there's a second reason to to charge industrial users more is because you're compensating for the residential. And I I don't know that we're, we have enough information to say like that's that necessary things to be right now.
Well, the one piece of data that I would give is that as I've talked to a couple thousand residents, one of the biggest things that they complained about was their water bill. And um I could get some specific sta- statistics on how many people brought that up. But I know that that is a hardship in our community. So I am looking at, is there some way that we can at least at least this year, coming off of what was an inordinately high increase, is there a way that we can that we can ease the pain of that for our residents a bit? So yes, I'm not saying that 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 is because of a specific um, you know, inequity, but I am saying that, yeah, I am just looking at creative ways that we can not put that on our people right now. Uh, yes, Alderman Santiago and then.
I I would just go back to your comment regarding, you know, um another increase in in water bills to our community. Having seen what's occurred in the past, I mean, I think we just need to be transparent that this needs to happen from the fore- from the get-go. Not, you know, two years down the line, basically, as to why the rates increase. Um, I think we just need to move forward bite the bullet and and learn from the past what has happened and how we struggle to then sync up and justify to the community as to why this occurred. I still don't think we have that answer yet or have provided that to the community in clear concise way for them to understand what transpired. Um, so I I think we we just need to move forward to keep up with the infrastructure. I mean, this this reminds me of the infrastructure that we had with our streets. And uh here we are now. So unfortunately we as as a community, as a council, need to learn from previous uh oversights, I guess, just tell them that. Uh, and uh you know, move forward here, but we need to set the precedence and uh you know, it's not going to be an easy thing to sell to the community, to the residents.
And and I'll go to Alderman Myers in just a second, but just bouncing off of that for a second. As we are communicating this to the to the community, and I do want to say that uh Mahula and his team and um city staff has been very helpful in this process and getting these numbers and every time I come back with a question, they've been great about getting the answers. Um, I think in the next couple of weeks, you all are going to hear from your constituents, just like we did when we talked about increasing revenue with a potential tax, we're going to go back and we're going to hear from our constituents. Uh, what uh who are hearing that we are talking about increases in water and sewer. We're not deciding anything tonight, we're giving informal directions to staff. But uh as we are communicating these things, and and I think that was very well put. Would it be a fair statement, uh, Mr. Patel, to say that uh that we are, we are keeping up with the the costs of the operational costs that that basically these increases are coming from uh uh from capital improvement projects that have been um
Delayed.
Delayed, put off.
Yeah, and again, so like I said, the operationally, like what we collect today, it's good enough for our running our operations, right? But we continue to defer maintenance, right? The operation cost will go up, right? Because things are not like we already said here, right? Things are going to cost more, the pumps are not getting cheaper, right? Pies not getting cheaper, right? Why do I do a one pump replacement or the entire lift station replacement, right? It's going to cost me more money, right? If I piecemeal it down the road, it's going to cost me even more, it's like we continue to defer oil changes, what it's do on your car, at some point, you're going to have to replace the engine. Which is going to be a lot bigger, um, you know, hit to the pocket.
Yeah. If you don't fix your roof, then you get a big storm have water and huge project, then end up spending way more. So, yeah, I think we all can relate to that. Um. Do you have any questions as far as direction? Is there anything you need from us tonight?
Yeah, so I mean, one thing I would recommend, right, and it's council's decision, it's not my decision, but one thing I would recommend, because if we plan rates are in place at the moment, my suggestion would be to move forward with twenty twenty six as it's planned, and then while we complete the water sewer rate study, and then we have this discussion again at the same time next year.
Okay. Thank you for the recommendation. Uh, council, anything else that you want to ask staff to um research for for us or anything like that?
I I just wanted to make a comment that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I did go back to you.
Uh, I mean, we were saying like, we're we're trying to find creative ways to help our residents. I mean, we we decided to forego a closer cash tax increase. And that was one step.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, yes, so so uh council, I I staff is asking me, so would we like more information on the split the different, split the difference option? And I think, yes, what I was hearing from you guys is, yes, we would like to know what those numbers would look like, kind of split up into a couple different scenarios. Set. Um, I'm getting some thumbs up and some confused looks. Alderman Santiago, what's the confusion?
Um, I think um you're talking about increasing the resident, the, I'm sorry, not increasing the residential as much as the uh business and industrials.
Yes, what would that look like? We're not pulling the trigger on anything, we're not voting on anything, but give us the numbers. If we did, if we did want to move in that direction, what would it look like?
Yes.
I I would say no, I I don't, I think we just need to go flat across the board.
Okay, Alderman David.
I I'd like to see those numbers, but I'd also like to see some sort of analysis justifying those numbers. Are the commercial properties actually costing us more on a sewer processing side to justify the increase? If they're not, they're already paying for, anyway, that might even justify.
Okay, so another question that I had asked staff that maybe, like, we're not going to get that we're not going to get that big study done, but just as a snapshot, I think it would be interesting um uh, an interesting thing to um look at how much water are are commercial industrial properties using proportionally to the rest of the city? And what are they paying proportionally to the rest of the city? That seems like that would be a a starting point. Do we have that?
Yeah, I can make a comment on that. I think uh I provided that statistic last time when I was doing the CIP presentation. Mentioned that we have roughly seventy three hundred meters in this town and uh just about thirteen percent of those, about nine hundred and sixty-ish are uh commercial industrial meters, so that represents about thirteen percent. But based on uh the consumption analysis that we did over the past few months, uh, those thirteen percent of the accounts actually represent fifty four percent of the water usage.
And then the corollary question to that is what portion of revenue do they represent?
Probably, simple answer would be fifty four percent.
But but that's not, but that's not a given. That that's, if if it's perfectly equitable, then yes. But it's, it doesn't work like that because it's, it's not just per gallon rates. It's the flat rates plus the per gallon rates.
Yes, it would be actually higher. Right? Because the water meter charges for commercial industrial meters are larger in size and the base charge for those larger meters are actually higher than.
Higher proportionally or higher as a gross number? So what are they proportionally? That's what matters. I mean.
You can find that out, right?
I mean, it it's just a very simple lens of looking at it, but if we saw that they are using fifty four percent of the water and only pay fifty percent of the revenue, then that would tell us something and it would give us a rationale. If we see it's the other way around, then that tells us something. We just don't know. Um, I'm just saying that that's kind of a simple way of getting a snapshot, isn't it? Okay, um. So, good?
More information is needed.
More information is helpful. And, okay, let, just give me a a thumbs up on more information would be something that you would like staff to do. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, if you feel like more information is not needed, give me a thumbs down. One, two. Okay, all right. So, yes, more information, please.
All right, so staff will be happy to provide some more information and then it would be our goal to get final direction for our November third meeting because that gives us time to make sure that we're including notification in the water bills.
Yep.
So that our residents get to hear it a nice chunk ahead of time so that we're maintaining those uh standards of good communication.
And city, you are hearing that. If you have input, now is the time, not now, now, but these next couple of weeks are are the time to get that to your elected representatives, okay? Alderman Hall.
I just want to say something. Every time my son comes home for three or four days, my water bill goes way up and I pay almost. Well, I love him dearly.
Maybe we can include a study on Alderman Hallit's son and the impact on.
No, no, we're not doing that.
All right, so uh number five, discussion, possible action to approve the city council uh meeting minutes of October uh of October sixth. Do we have a motion? Alderman Hall.
I make the motion.
Second. Alderman Swiatek. Any discussion? Any changes that are needed? Going once, going twice. Three times sold. Okay, all in favor of approving the city council meeting minutes of October sixth, twenty twenty five? Um, let's uh do a voice vote. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions abstain? So noted, Alderman Myers abstains. Number six, discussion, possible action to approve the corporate disbursement report, October, dated October twentieth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of one million eight hundred and eighty two thousand three hundred dollars and five cents. Of motion. Alderman Davis.
Make suggestion to approve the amount. Stated.
Okay, second. Alderman Swiatek. We are going to call the roll. Oh, my bad. Discussion.
Um, so uh I want to get some feedback about the Ansel blink charges.
Okay.
Um, are these one-time charges because they're very hot? Um, and I, number one, are these one-time charges? Number two, uh, do we have budgets to pay for?
Yes, uh, I am going to invite our interim city administrator to respond.
So as a whole, legal bills, we are going to be over budget this year. I mean, at one point, we had three different firms doing different work. That is, I think, one of the very few aspects of our twenty twenty five budget where those line items are going to be over what we originally budgeted. As a whole, the budget is currently trending towards about a one point two million dollar surplus, even with anticipating some overages. Uh, you'll have seen that, yes, those Ansel blink bills are pretty high. That is over the course of two months of billing and quite a few cases that they had to spend time getting caught up on because they were taking on cases that previous firms had been handling. Uh, as well as just a lot of very specialized and unique legal issues, it'd be the annexation, which is something that had been on the books for twenty years. So this is just going to be a rough year in legal bills because of how many non-standard things have been going on and the fact that we've had the support of a couple different law. Non-standard things have been going on and the fact that we've had the support of a couple of different law firms. Uh, we're budgeting with the thought process that things will. Smooth out next year as we get through kind of that transition period.
Are you confident that the budget that's in process for next year, uh, covers Ansel blink? As our representative for that year, like, is it taking these two bills into account? And then kind of extrapolating that over the year?
If the challenge hasn't been Ansel blink being a unusually expensive law firm. It's been the number of things that have been going on that have been unique. And we're not anticipating that many unique things next year. Usually, our legal line items are. Thirty percent below budget, forty percent below budget. So based on the longer term trends. We think that this year was a bit of a blip. And that next year we would fall back more in line with our more traditional expenses. So I don't wanna say that the bills being high are specific to Ansel blink having a higher rate. Because they didn't, their rate was very much in line with other firms that we've worked with. It's just been an unusual set of circumstances this year.
Yeah, I ask because, I mean, they're, we're, they're working for us on an interim basis, and at some point, the interim is gonna run out. Uh, and so I would like to have more information about, like, how did this period of time? Work in terms of, uh, how how costly was it versus our past legal representation? And versus like other options that are out there.
So once we get through this budget cycle, my intention is to put together an RFP. To allow a variety of law firms to come forward and submit proposals. To hopefully be our, uh, long-term corporation council.
But keep in mind, as, um, Ms. Messino said, that. This represents, um, the period of time where. A number of litigation things, which had been for. A number of period of months since the changeover administrations. Um, basically had just been bit pushed out and. You know, we we had just been asking for continuances on things until things switched over. At this point, we switched over. And then, like, every litigation case that we have. We're having to, you know, to deal with, um, with it and and bring, uh, on our new firm.
Yeah, that's my main question. Is is this a one-time thing or can I take this number and divide by two and expect?
No, I don't think you can. I think, I think it's a one-time thing, yeah. Uh, all right, it's a, I think it's a unique, unique circumstance, yeah.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be sustainable, hundred twenty-six thousand dollars every two months would.
Yeah, so, uh. Other discussion? Alderman Santiago?
Yeah, just to, uh, follow up on that, uh, my my question regarding the, uh. Expense report is, uh, I still see invoices for, uh, Bond and Conway on here. Are these, uh, lingering charges, uh, last of them, uh, they're gonna stop soon?
So there's a few items where Bana Conway is still partnering with Ansel blink to transition over files, brief them. On the status of cases, and I believe there might be one to two cases where they were so close to the end. The recommendation was that they finish them out, although admittedly, I can't remember those off the top of my head.
Okay.
It was just some, basically wrap-up situations where we've gone through just about everything being fully transferred over. But there were aspects such as files that needed to be transferred and updates that had been made.
Yeah, I I wouldn't go on record saying that they are still handling those cases cuz I thought that we had said no, but. That definitely the transition part. Uh, the trend, uh, there there are numerous things where where they've been having to. Basically hand over the case to Ansel blink.
Um, as a follow-up, so to Alderman Myers' statement, um. The charges are categorized, right, um, different categories, right? Admin, general fund, et cetera.
Yeah, and you can get the detailed.
Okay, and that's just because of the fact that where the services are being provided?
Correct. So if it was something related to the annexation, then we would do it towards like. Planning and zoning and economic development. If it's something related to labor negotiations, then that would go into HR. If it was related to an employee's medical leave, that would be HR. So we do try for some. Uh, transparency to shift out these expenses, not just in one account. But putting it into an area that's related to the work that they're doing.
And and, um, just my my last comment, I mean, I I know that this. The this expense report represents everything that, uh, the city spends money on. Uh, but some of the the line items that that we see here are so high level summarized that. I can't make huts or tails, you know, consulting charge, what it entails, what it covers.
If there's ever an item that any of you are interested in in these line items. If you can let us know at the beginning of the day Monday, or even better on Friday. Then I can work with staff and we can have the detail ready and share that information with you and. From a transparency perspective, if you'd like to include that as part of your comments before approving the disbursement report. Saying, okay, I felt these items weren't very clear, so I asked staff to give detail. And then you could go into that detail, as long as we get beginning of the day Monday, uh, we're, we would have the ability to bring that detail.
And if there's something that's like a recurring thing that you think we're gonna. Want to know about, you could communicate that as well. And that's what I was gonna say too, like the, and like. If any of the council wants to see the detailed billing from Ansel blink for the detailed billing from Bond and Associates or whatever, I mean. We we have that. Okay, any other discussion? All right, so I think we will call the roll on approving this.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Swiatek.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Oop, Steve.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Howlett. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. That brings us to number seven, uh, the reading of the proposed consent agenda. And, um, uh. Uh, Public Affairs, uh, Committee, Alderman Smith, do you wanna read that resolution for us?
Yes, we have one item here, Resolution number twenty-five R zero zero one seven. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute certain agreement with McGrath Honda of Saint Charles LLC.
And I apologize, but there is one typo that we need to reflect verbally here, that's Fox Valley Honda of Saint Charles.
And a second typo, while mayor, yours and mine, we have the correct one, the rest of the council does not. It should read, uh, Resolution zero zero six seven, not one seven. So.
And because that's not a, uh, cuz we have to make an amendment, uh, that has to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, so, um, items not sent to committee, well, I guess we'll just, uh, move on and, uh, come back to that. Uh, B, ordinance number twenty-five oh zero zero four seven, an ordinance granting a special use permit. For, excuse me, motor vehicle care facility at one eight five East Roosevelt Road. C, ordinance number twenty-five oh zero zero four eight. An ordinance granting a special use permit for internet-based motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle repair and motor vehicle body shop at three nine one Charles Court. And item D, ordinance number twenty-five oh zero zero four nine, an ordinance amending the code ordinances. Of the City of West Chicago, Chapter Three, Section three twelve C, decreasing class O liquor licenses. O liquor license. So, um. Uh, do we? Yes, Alderman Bibi.
I'd like to request to remove item seven A from consent.
Okay, thank you. Anything else anyone would like to see remitted? Okay, I would entertain a motion. To establish consent agenda. Alderman.
My soul.
Okay, and that is obviously reflecting A being removed. Is there a second? Alderman Myers? Okay, uh, all in. Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstains, extensions, okay? Then, uh, number nine, motion to approve items on the established consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for that. Alderman Myers and a second from Alderman Davis. Let's call the roll on some.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Howlett.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Swiatek.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
That passes. Let's move on to number ten, consideration of, uh, item A from Public Affairs Committee. We need to amend that. Uh, in order to, um, vote on it.
I would, I would recommend that we don't vote on it, that we, uh, carry it over to the next meeting since it's. The resolution number is inaccurate and also the 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 name of the, uh. That is a car dealership. Right, well, this one is accurate. I understand that.
Okay.
And just for the sake of being being cautious with this.
Yeah.
Um, and and the title of the company is is germane to the to the residents.
So just one thing, I believe Colin might have a comment that it may affect our ability to. Move ahead with this contract.
Because Bailey Honda gave us nine thousand dollars less for the vehicles, but they're getting rid of them if we don't get them immediately. So.
So we.
We, I sent the amended to Larry before the published time. And I don't know how seventeen got put out there. Or how she, and I sent her the adjusted new.
And the resolute, and the caption on the resolution is correct. It, I know that that has the correct number and we have the correct dealership. On here.
Okay.
The one that went to pack was zero zero six seven two.
The one that went to pack had the correct information.
So if the one that went to the, that went out in the packet is correct?
To the pack.
To the pack, Public Affairs Committee.
Okay.
Yes, that was.
That was approved earlier tonight was correct.
Is it in, is it in open meetings? Is that problem that we?
And let me double check our website and see.
Website list be over.
Okay, thank you for checking that for the audience.
Website has the incorrect one?
Yeah, it's hard. Yeah, otherwise they had the whole.
Yeah, it is correct on the Public Affairs Committee.
So, it sounds like we would lose about nine thousand dollars if we, uh.
I can arrest Russell Kevin for it.
So let me.
I do have one quick question, Kevin.
Let me. Okay, I was gonna ask Kevin a question and then, um.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so. You're our attorney, is there a way that we can do that, do this?
Without breaking the law?
Without breaking the law.
I mean, nobody's going to prison over it, uh, you know.
That's not what we're asking.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, where is the?
I I mean, it is a, and I have my.
Okay, yeah.
Here you go.
I I let me, let me, let me ask our city administrator to give her input.
Colin?
Oh, we, okay.
What was the total dollar amount of that we would actually be spending? Is it below the fifty thousand dollar city?
Fifty-five thousand.
But is it below the fifty thousand dollar city administrator spending authority?
Yes, if they give us the tax credit that we're fighting for, it'll take us another three thousand dollars down. Uh, because we're, we're fighting that we don't have to pay taxes on, so it'll put us below the fifty thousand.
So that's where my question is, is if it's below the fifty thousand, do I just approve it here and can I?
So I I just used, um, uh, Dirk Price, uh, GPT, um, my, our. One of our departmental partners who's here in the audience, uh, said, recommend that we can do it now and then ratify it at the next meeting. Uh, so we can do, we can pass this resolution now, we can vote on it. Um, and then at our next, uh, city council meeting, then we can, uh, we can ratify it.
What's the difference between passing and ratifying? How does that work? I mean, do we do anything different right now?
I have to personally talk to you in executive session. The answer, Mayor, is you did not tell the public that the money was going to the correct dealership. And, uh, and you didn't list the the correct amount, so.
Okay.
Public was not informed, but given the urgency. The case law is if you have the power to do it, you have the power to ratify the action. So this gives the chief the authority to go buy the vehicles. He's not out there with his backside exposed. And then you take care of it with the public, and if somebody's mad that you're going to a wrong Honda dealer. They can come in at the next meeting and express their discomfort or disagreement with you, but then you'll take the action again. To ratify your action tonight, and that way you'll check off the technical legalities about probably season it on your agenda correctly. While still getting the chief to vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like he said.
So. So how many lifelines do we get to use?
Indefinite. That's why you guys hate us.
All right, so, um, so we would not do anything different tonight. We would go ahead and vote on. This.
The amended resolution.
The amended.
On the amended resolution. Um, and then, uh, next week. We will talk to you, next month, we'll talk to you guys about what we need to do there.
Sure.
But we'll be able to do it.
Yes, we can do it tonight.
Okay, all right, so we need to, I would entertain a a a motion to amend. The resolution. Am I doing this right?
Yep.
Okay, Alderman Morano.
Yes, I make a motion to amend. I don't, was it seven A to read Resolution number twenty-five R zero zero six seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute certain agreement with Fox Valley Honda Aurora LLC.
Okay, is there a second? Alderman Smith. Voice vote. Roll call.
All right, Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Howlett. Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Swiatek.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, so we amended it. So we didn't actually do the money yet, but now we're gonna do the money. Um, uh, I would entertain a motion to pass the amended. Resolution. Yes, Alderman Howlett.
Aye.
Okay, the best Resolution twenty-five R zero zero six seven. Is there a second? Alderman Demus. Okay, now, this is definitely money, so now we'll do the, uh.
Alderman Howlett.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Swiatek.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Um, that brings us to reports by committee. Um, finance.
Uh, nothing at this time, but we do have an upcoming meeting, which you will talk about in response and now.
Okay, all right, great. Yes, infrastructure.
I took up a lot of our time with the structure today, so I will.
All right, all affairs.
No, no report.
Okay, great. Um, and what did I miss? What's that, development?
Movement to report.
Okay, nothing to report. Um. Unfinished business. Okay, number thirteen, new business. Um, I'm going to skip over that for this, uh, meeting and, uh, come back to it next meeting.
Amen.
Okay, um, number fourteen, uh, correspondence and announcements. So, uh, on November third, we, uh, we have a finance meeting, uh, coming up. Um, and we're all invited to that. Uh, we also as, um. Was mentioned previously, have a a health fair coming up on the twenty-fifth. Is that the right?
Yeah, the community vaccine event on October twenty-fifth, so this Saturday.
Community vaccine event twenty-fifth, Saturday from.
Ten AM?
Ten AM till one PM, so free uh, flu vaccines and um. Uh, other help-related vendor support uh, organizations, they will 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 have booths. Alderman Swiatek.
Uh, from the Environmental Commission, um, pumpkin recycling event. I know we haven't had Halloween yet, but we have an event. November eighth from nine to one at New Hope United Methodist Church.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else in terms of correspondence and announcements? Okay, Alderman Demas?
I know our downtown uh, trick-or-treating is also going on, so.
Yes, thank you.
That now.
Yeah, that uh, is from.
Saturday, one to three, I believe.
Yeah, one to three on Saturday. Um, there's, there's actually kind of two things going on, right? The uh. The trunker trunk-or-treats.
With the library.
The library, and then our um, downtown trick-or-treating and the. And the uh, city will have a a booth. I'll be there. T will be there, um, and uh, yeah. Other than that, that's about it. Um, we do have our exciting um, uh, staff pumpkin decorating contest. And by the way, I am entering on behalf of the council. Uh, I'm making an entry for the elected representatives, so if anybody wants to help me with that. Welcome to, welcome to do that. Now, one pumpkin, yes, one pumpkin for department, so. Uh, so that'll be exciting. The public will be voting, and I'm sure that we as elected representatives will be winning that contest. Um, mayor's comments, uh. I am sorry to disappoint you, but I'm uh, not gonna say a lot tonight. I think I've, I think I've said. Uh, a lot uh, of things recently and um. I'm all talked out, so uh, we are going to um. Have an executive session um, immediately following our uh. We'll do a a five-minute bathroom break, I believe. Um, so uh, we will.
We could just do, 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 do you just wanna take a break? Just say, let's adjourn to executive session and let her.
We will adjourn to, we'll take a. Motion for. Um, we'll take a motion, and we need to uh. We need to say why we're going into executive session. Um.
This one, please, litigation is the uh.
Yes, yes, um, okay, so uh. We've got some litigation stuff, um. Uh, is this the greenhouse?
No, this is uh, in sewer-related.
Sewer-related litigation. Are we doing greenhouse stuff or no?
No, no.
No greenhouse stuff, okay, because I don't go to those, because I'm. I've firewalled myself from that, so uh, we will be doing some litigation stuff in. In our uh, closed session and uh, we would, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. Second from Alderman Demas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
But I'm in a bathroom break, everybody.